The pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to, uh, we'll call the meeting to order, motion to approve the agenda as presented with, uh, one addition, uh, at the conclusion, executive session for personnel. Thank you, Marty, second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Conflicts disclosure? None. Public communications? None. Motion to approve the minutes of our May thirteenth and May twenty-third meetings. Thank you, Larry, second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the financial statements. Thank you, Larry, second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty, discussion?
Uh, just to let you know, for the capital projects, I am going to leave that account open for one more year, just for anything else that's related to the project. Once we're done, that'll get transferred into capital outlay, but for right now, we'll just keep it separated.
Any other comments?
Everything's tracking into July, wherever we want it to be, it looks like.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the claims as presented. Thank you, second?
Second.
Discussion?
The J D H claim is in there, you all are aware of that?
Yep.
And there's still a small holdback yet because of...
Yeah, like eight or nine thousand.
You okay with the J D H claim then, Larry?
Yeah, we walked through it the other day.
Things coming along there with the punch list and...
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Okay?
Just a few, just a few minor things.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, motion to set the time and place for the budget hearing, which would be our next board meeting. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Joel, Marty, Joel, excuse me. Discussion? So, uh, right now, our regularly scheduled meeting would be on the eighth, correct? And with the fourth of July, uh, Lori was telling me she's a little bit concerned we won't have everything together to have our claims with the, just not having...
Just with the post office closed.
So, we're looking at July fifteenth, just do the next meeting, is that all right with you gentlemen? Following Monday?
Both Mondays, I'm not sure.
But if you need me, you can call in if we had to?
Yeah.
Okay, Joel, you good with that?
We'll see.
Oh, yeah, you are.
Well, if not, we'll just have to do July eighth and...
We'll figure something out, but right now, let's tentatively go July fifteenth. If you have something pop up, Larry, Joel, if you got something pop up.
It doesn't have to be Monday, does it?
Nope, but Aaron prefers Mondays because of where he's at with his business. So, we can move it to a Wednesday if we need to, or Tuesday or Thursday, we can move around.
Mornings.
Morning will be tough. Yeah. Okay, let's go July fifteenth, if the group is okay with that.
If not, you guys just let me know immediately and we'll just...
Okay. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve, uh, membership in the South Dakota High School Activities Association for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Thank you, Marty, second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry, discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve open enrollment applications twenty-five zero-one through twenty-five zero-four. Thank you, Larry, second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion?
Um, new move-ins?
Um, I think they're just up and coming kindergartners that are...
Not in the family moving in.
There might be some siblings of families that already have. We've double checked all of the, uh, transportation issues, if there's any requests or something that's outside of this week that wants transportation, so... As well as I E Ps and special ed.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve, uh, the resignation of Alexis Gertis?
To move.
Thank you, Joel, second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty, discussion? I do have a letter from Alexis, uh, Dear Dr. Block and Webster Area School Board. I'm ready to formally announce my resignation from my position as a fifth grade teacher at Webster Area Elementary School, effective May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. This decision was not made lightly and comes after consideration of my personal circumstances. My family is relocating to another town due to significant career advancement opportunities for my spouse, which necessitates my own departure from the school. Working at Webster Area has been a profoundly enriching experience. Over the past four years, I have enjoyed fostering curiosity and learning among my students, and I've learned immensely from my dedicated colleagues. I am grateful for the professional opportunities that I was provided, which have greatly enhanced my teaching skills and deepen my passion for education. I am committed to making this transition as smooth as possible. I will complete all and any pending requirements of my position as soon as possible. I hope to maintain a positive relationship with Webster Area Elementary School, and I look forward to supporting the school in any way I can in the future. Thanks again for the opportunity to be part of such a supportive and dynamic community. Sincerely, Alexis Gertis. Well, on behalf of the Webster Board and, you know, everybody else in the community, thank you, uh, Mrs. Gertis, we appreciate everything you've done, uh, with our classrooms and, uh, you will be missed, and we wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors, wherever you end up being at. Any other comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the comprehensive special education plan.
To move.
Thank you, Joel, second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, Larry, discussion?
So, this is, uh, something we do annually, and there are a few changes that I just wanted to mention, so this documented that we're addressing these issues. And some of these come from our, the, the Northeast Cooperative for Recommendations. Uh, this was also, um, information that the Department of Ed had for, um, recommendations to include in the, the, the plans. Basically, what they do is they put a master plan together for all of the co-op schools, and then we, uh, make modifications to address our own school districts. One of the things that we needed to address was, um, I'll, I'll just go through the, the four tabs, just so you have changes, or know what the changes are, and you, you're welcome to read this, it's not a great read or anything like that. Basically, just, uh, outlines how we handle special ed, um, whether it's discipline, kids qualifying for special ed, out of district placement, center base, all of those things. So, some of the items that we have to look at this year that we needed to address specifically for the, um, the school district, minor things. In this day and age, uh, email is actually probably the, the most preferred means of communication with most parents. We need to address it in, in our registration form or somewhere along the lines with our special ed statement. That is the means we're gonna use unless otherwise noted by the parents, and so that's, uh, a, a paragraph that I put into this plan statement, that's what we're planning on doing. Manifest determination, if we ever have to, um, change a placement of a student where they're, they're in our, our normal classrooms, and we place them somewhere like in the center base, or maybe in a, a behavioral room or something like that, or out of district placement, we needed to list the number of people or the, the types of people that could be on the team, which is typically your I E P team, which includes parents, teachers, school counselor, admin, possibly a personal counselor that's involved. So, I just listed those. Um, out of district placement, um, we needed to, uh, identify who would be the case manager. Our common practice here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, our common practice, if we have a student that's out of district or placement, say it's somebody in the middle school, it would be our middle school special ed teacher that is still that case manager for that I E P. That's the person, uh, responsible for writing the I E P, writing the goals. And it's typically with coordination and collaboration with the facility where the student may be going, but technically it is their responsibility, so that's what we've done, and that's what I've written in here. And then the last one is, just training options for, we have prepared professionals and teacher training, and we left this kind of vague, uh, because it's, they expect that we do training with our staff, at least annually in certain areas and biannually in other areas. So, I've just listed some options for training. Otherwise, nothing changes. We have to approve this annually at the June meeting, uh, because the, the sheet that I have to turn in is due prior to the July meeting, so... Any questions?
All in favor say aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve, uh, supplemental budget zero-five dash six dash twenty-four. Thank you, Larry, second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve change order number five as presented in your packet. Thank you, Larry, second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty, discussion?
There was a, a credit for, um, gutters, we actually did the gutters locally with somebody. We paid the bill, so then they credited us the amount that they had in originally, you know, the program. And then, um, the others include the, the flooring outside the office area as well as the sprinkler system. With that, the, the flooring outside is done, we need to let it sit for a few days before we can wax it. The sprinkler system, they have not started that installation, but, um, I've been in contact with a person to do it there. They plan to do it yet within the next few weeks, so...
Any, any progress on that range on the hood?
That's a good question, we...
There was a guy here to look at it after the last board meeting, but he never stopped back in the office.
So, the last communication we had, Larry, was when you and I spoke, and I had informed you that, um, Patty was going to have a conversation with Jack regarding perhaps maybe a different number with the ones that look like it's actually the reverse, it's, it's dents that occurred when they were putting it in, so they, they kind of protrude outward instead of like hailbands. Um, but they did fix the other portion of the, of the hood, and it looks actually very good, you can't even tell that it was, it was dented where they did repair it. He did have somebody make some attempts to, to tap those in, but, um, they, they believe they've done what they can. It's just that we're, we're still haven't, we haven't, uh, come together on the number. That's what I left Patty with, I just said, maybe talk to Jack and see if he can come up with a different number. Did explain to them regarding the conversations we had, uh, with insurance and how that, how that sometimes plays out with a, like a percentage of the cost or percentage of the, the cost of replacement or percentage of the cost of repair or something like that.
You know, I'm just looking at change order five, I really hadn't... I looked at the items that were included, but I'm just looking at the total number, and, and you've gotta use the word change order very lightly in this project, 'cause it was kind of a design build, I mean, we had a pretty good plan going into it. There was a lot of things that we knew we had to design along the way, but when you look at the total changes of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars on nine million, five hundred and five thousand, that's really good.
Yeah, that's actually...
That's really, really good. And that's got a lot to do with that guy sitting over there and that guy sitting over there.
Not me.
Yeah. Right over the top.
Yeah, that's right over, and Jim.
Yeah. That's pretty impressive.
That is. Really think about what, is that even...
And, and, and they're not changes, they were things that we knew we were gonna need to address along the way.
There are a few things they forgot to put in there.
Yeah.
Just for oversight.
You're about one and a half percent.
But you negotiated your, we negotiated our way through those and just had a plan.
One and a half percent of the total project cost, that's kind of nice.
Yes, it is. Well, the experience and that, and the expertise that, that Larry has had with this project certainly helps, because there's lots of things that I would even know.
Larry, you can get yourself on the county commission, city council, you're gonna be like, kind of like a project builder.
I don't want to hear the way it is.
All right, anything else on change order number five? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, all church boards. All right, uh, discussion items, superintendent report, Dr. Haynes.
Well, I'll try to be quick here, um, the first thing I have is Johnson Controls', uh, Preventative Maintenance Service Plan. I sent you an email earlier today that has, um, it's a, basically a summary of what was included in the preventative plan last year. That plan actually expired on March first of twenty-four, and so we've been without a preventative maintenance plan since March, which is, it's okay. Craig and I met with, uh, Jay Nelson from J C I last week, and he did get me the orig- the, the very first version of, of this in time to put it in the board packet, but after we met, um, there were some things that, that needed to change. Um, he was unaware that we didn't go forward with, uh, the rooftop units for the, the wrestling room and, and remodel effects, and I said that, that was all an option that we, we negated. Um, and then he also had, uh, did not have all of the units for the, the C T E included, plus he had air conditioning in the, the shops, which was not accurate as well, so this is a little bit more accurate with the units that we have. I'm not expecting you to make a decision tonight, I want you to take this home, look at it. The, the biggest, the biggest need that I think we have as a school district, um, is, is changing some of the filters that are really difficult to change. And when I say that, I don't mean like the units that are on the floor in the classrooms, those are pretty easy. We've got units up in the, the, um, the H VAC area that takes care of the, the gymnasium, which is not an easy task in changing those. Uh, the units in the music room are difficult to change. Uh, there's a few rooftop units where it's, it's just getting to be a little bit more challenging to expect, uh, custodial people to be up on the roof and taking care of these units. Um, so I, I do believe we need to have some sort of maintenance plan in place. Uh, it makes sense to do it Johnson Controls', if that's the, the company that we're having take care of our, our stuff and they provide it. But if there's another means, I'm okay with that as well. Um, this is a sizable increase to what we had from previous years, I think last year's was about sixteen something, sixteen-five, and the initial one on this is twenty-four, almost twenty-five thousand. And so, we've got some things to think about, um, that's why I don't think we should make the decision tonight, so...
They inventory the filters and such, we don't?
So, we have filters on, in, in storage, and so we're kind of responsible for that. They wanna know what we have in storage, and then we'll move forward with those.
So, their quote is, we supply the filters or...
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I wanna say we, we have filters for a good portion of them, but it, it may not be for the ones that we're asking them to do, I can clarify on that.
Well, I like where you're going with that, Larry, I mean, that's gonna be their responsibility.
In the future, we would prefer that, I would think.
I, I would think so too, yeah, why would we carry the inventory like them carry it?
I will clarify that, or get some clarification on that.
And are there any other things they can be doing for us while they're here to help offset some of our custodial? You, you, you know, I don't know.
So, what they generally do, if you look at, um, the, the different units and then the things that I highlighted on the service that they actually did, you can see if they've done something with checking belts, bearings, uh, different parts of the equipment that needs to be checked on a regular basis. That's the other part is, if we have our custodians do the filters, they're not generally gonna be checking things, they're gonna change filter and deposit and move on. And so, it's sort of like an oil change with a vehicle, when you take it into a full-service shop, they are gonna check some other things, they might tell you information you don't wanna hear, but they will be checking some other things, and that's, that's one of the things I, I get a little bit concerned about. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment. And so, if that maintenance can help, I would like it to. It's just, it is difficult. It, it's, it's not very easy to swallow these, these amounts, that's a, that's a lot of money.
You know, but I, to me, I don't have necessarily a problem with this, because I look at it just like, we got how many years out of that boiler? Because we had the in-house knowledge of our janitors at that point in time and our maintenance individuals from nineteen ninety, two thousand, two thousand ten, that were able to keep that going. You know, how much money did they save over the school, you know, the years for the school district, because they kept it going an extra one, two, three, four years? If we can get the right people here to keep our equipment up to speed, I don't know if we're necessarily gonna find that in our next employees, I think that's harder and harder to find. So, if we can contract some of that out, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so, um, we're working on final reports, pretty much done with all the final reports, there's end of year sign-off, uh, discipline reports, he's got to do for special ed, I have to do a safe, uh, drug-free and gun-free s- school report. Most of those, I believe, are done, we haven't had any, any major issues in any of those. Um, we're now preparing for our professional development, which will occur in August and thereafter, so we're start, put that schedule together. Um, Craig has made some contacts with, uh, some folks that can provide some, uh, training that's through Southwest West Central Cooperative, and it's with our behavioral analyst, um, which normally is, is, is good training for those that are in special ed, but it's, it's excellent training for all of our staff, so I think we're gonna do something with that. She's tentatively put us down for August fifteenth, which is our second, uh, insert date in August. And then obviously, we gotta do some title line training, employability training, uh, literacy training, some things like that, but we're working on those. We're working on the hiring process right now, Lori and I have done some interviews, we still have some more interviews with the office staff, and Craig and I have done some interviews for, uh, right now, we've advertised as a P E teacher because we have an in-house transfer request to the fifth grade, so that's what we're doing right now. Um, and then the last thing, I guess, in mine, in my notes, uh, I just wanted to mention to you, some of you I haven't had a chance to talk to, and I haven't reached out to you via email or call, um, but I am going to submit a C T E grant application this Friday, hopefully Thursday I can submit it, 'cause the deadline Friday. This grant application is for innovative equipment, similar to what we did, uh, when we got the, uh, the, um, commercial culinary, uh, kitchen equipment. This would, um, affect our health science, career tech ed program, which a lot of people don't realize that we actually have a s- a, a full a career tech ed program with our health science with Jenna Center, and it's called Project Lead the Way, that's the, the, the biomed, the class, and the intro to, uh, it's biomed and, and human, human body systems. And so, with that part of the grant application, um, we're going to request the funds for what's called an, uh, an anatommage table. I have to, I have to think about pronouncing that. Um, I've seen some online information, and I, I've been through an online presentation, they are absolutely awesome. I've not seen one in person, I'm excited to, to know that if we can be awarded this, or we are awarded this money, we can, we can purchase something like this. Basically, what it is, um, it's, it's a, it, three D imagery, uh, on a, an electronic table, and you can do anything you want with dissection, you can, obviously can't feel it like you would, but it's everything three D imagery. And there are four or five different people who have donated their bodies as cadavers, they've also given permission to have their bodies put on this as digital imagery, and then there's also animals associated with it. So, it's not just our health sciences, obviously, animals fit the biology dissection, but we can have this table utilized in our animal science class and our advanced animal science class. And so, I'm kind of excited about that particular part of it. The other portion of the grant will be for our, uh, architecture and construction program. Um, what we want to purchase there are simulators for heavy equipment. Um, and the, the request that, that Bo Larson has provided to me would be a, a forklift, a skid steer, and an excavator. And basically, these are simulators that you would sit in, it's all that virtual stuff where the seat vibrates, the things will move. Um, I'm kind of excited to test those out myself if we're awarded this grant as well. And so, those would be used in, uh, he thinks he can, he can incorporate that in the building trades, even though building trades is normally, you know, uh, building construction, but there's, there's part of that he can use, uh, as well as his intro to architecture and construction. Depending on how far we go with it, um, if we have a lot of interest, we can utilize that as, uh, heavy equipment, one, and heavy equipment, two, for operating those. Um, and then those we can actually use in our middle school program, because we have an exploratory, uh, architecture and construction program, so our middle school kids will get access to those as well. So, it's due this Friday, we find out on the twenty-first if we get it or we don't, we have to order the stuff immediately, I mean, it's a turnaround like crazy. And so, the total amount is, is, uh, about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, two hundred and seventeen, um, in, in equipment that we'd be, we'd be requesting.
That's outstanding.
Yeah, nice.
Those simulators are a quick deal, you're seeing them everywhere.
So, I was excited to tell you, but I don't wanna get too hyped up and then get benign, so, let me see.
How many grants do they offer, for just one or two or...
Um, well, this is, this is statewide, and it's competitive, so I don't know how much total money there is, um, but I, I think they have some funds available, so I think, I think we're gonna see some, some neat things in the news as to which schools are going to be awarded these. I do know it's, there, there's quite a few schools that are doing, and I'm aware of other schools that are requesting the, uh, anatommage table as well as the simulators. This go around, so, um, so we'll be up against other schools. That's what I have for my...
Okay, anything else for Dr. Block? Thank you, good luck, appreciate you putting that work forward. Mr. Case, principal report.
Well, Dr. Block about covered it all there, so he did a good job. Um, yeah, driver's ed started today, classroom ended last week. Uh, buildings and grounds information, I can share that now a little bit, the sidewalk has been completed for the playground. That looks good, Roman Larson and his crew did a good job. The sandbox is currently being moved, that's not finished yet. The next step in the playground would be taking the ten-foot swings out and connecting the other eight-foot swings. And then after that, Mammoth said they'll be in, in probably two weeks to start, a week or two, so... It gives Mike, Mike Ninky a little time to, uh, get the swings out and put those up.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Case? Thank you. Move on to N E S C.
We have a meeting next Monday, um, last month I was there.
I don't remember anything.
It was pretty uneventful, it was a, it was kind of a quick meeting.
Yeah.
First finalizing things, they are transitioning to a new director, who will, well, she won't take over this one yet, but her first meeting will be in July.
Okay. Buildings and grounds.
Um... I'm just gonna think what I've got here. We will talk about the property liability insurance, so that's gonna be some buildings and ground stuff there. With respect to the, uh, the punch list, there's, there's very, very minor things that are left on that. Um, the sprinkler system, however, as I just mentioned, has not yet been, um, they haven't started that process yet, so we're, we're still waiting on that. We have some fencing, uh, that we'd like to, we've contacted, um, Todd Sandel regarding some fencing, just to adjust some of the gates, as well as some of the fence, uh, mesh, and so we hope to have that done. I have contacted Cory Kynes regarding some landscaping, don't have a quote from him yet, but we're, we're gonna work and collaborate together to get a quote to do some landscaping in that middle area where we probably will have more of a, a rock instead of the grass type of things, um. And then there's a little bit poured by this concrete, between the concrete pad that we poured, and then the grass that goes down. There's a few areas that we want to address there, so... Um, other than that, our custodians have been working hard, uh, as you can see, if you've been in the hallways, a lot of the items are moved out of the classrooms to, to wax, um. Really, they've been doing a great job this summer, the, the staff that we have, although it's a low-number staff, um, they're working hard, so we're moving along.
Okay. Property slash liability insurance.
So, Lori and I just received notification, uh, a brief email on Friday and then a more formal email this morning from Kim Center. And Lori, if you wanna just read?
Sure.
Some of that there, please.
Yeah. So, as I informed you on Friday, EMC is going to issue the property renewal on the school. Um, I'm just gonna read and skip a few things, so we don't have so much. All the steps you have taken as far as lining up electrical professionals and structural inspections, cleaning out of areas, and the... All the steps you have taken as far as lining up electrical professionals and structural inspections, cleaning out of areas and the start of discussions regarding the. New structure to completely eliminate the use of the old wing. Um, they've taken all of that into consideration. This shows them that their concerns are being dealt with. Um, she also let them know that, you know, we were at the mercy of the timing of the professionals, the engineers, when they could show up. Um, EMC renewing the property does not change anything you, so you know, everything else was okay. It was just the property part of it. Um, everything else we have in process as far as inspections, all of those still need to take place. Um, she sent me a, a text message a little while ago and with our ins- without the property insurance. Our overall insurance package is going down one percent. The property insurance is going to increase, which we knew it was going to anyway because, you know, we've added another wing. And so she should be getting that estimate this week and then she'll forward that to us. Um. Let's see what else. Okay, that's that. Preventive maintenance. There are some items that, you know, we have to have a preventive maintenance inspection program in place. The basement, we are working on that situation. Um, she did ask them, you know, if we could move forward and just not ensure that portion since it's cold storage now and because it is attached, they said no. Which is understandable. Yeah, I think that's pretty much it. So we should be able to have coverage by July first. She was in, um, she was in the process of getting a quote from another company. Um, but she said, in here somewhere. And the reason that wasn't done earlier is because you can't just go out and get these quotes as an insurance agency. They had to be appointed or contracted. To write business with those companies, so they, on their end, they did all of that. But with that being said, the other company that they were looking for, um. The in, the coverage of that old wing would not be included. And so if something happened that started there, that moved into this portion, we would not be covered. So we're just.
So. You know, sorry, um, with respect to what we have to do for some corrective action. With the electrical, I originally thought the electrical was associated with the elementary because that's the oldest portion of our building. And the oldest electrical panels, but it's actually electrical throughout the district. And so. Um, I have to, there's some people I wanna thank. Number one, I wanna thank Kim Center for being. Uh, an assistant to getting this done and persistent in getting this done. Um, she was very persistent in making sure that we were, we were contacting people and getting information that we could get to get to her so she could get forwarded on to others. Travis Sickmiller, um, has been the person that I contacted regarding, um, I knew that he could help us with the electrical with his particular engineering background. So Shwan Electric is going to do a review of our middle school, high school electrical and our elementary as two separate things. And then they will provide recommendations of things that probably need to be updated and that's what the insurance company is looking for. As for the, the actual boiler room, the room, the concrete walls and the floor and everything down there. Um, we needed to have a structural engineer come in. So, uh, Shwan Electric has already started the paperwork. They will be out review and they will have a report to us by June twenty sixth is what they've been informing us. Uh, the structural engineer is actually RISE, Structural Associates out of Sioux Falls. They're actually coming tomorrow. One of the things that came up last week, um, was when Travis was here, there was actually one day, I mean, it was a week and a half ago. Raining like crazy and Travis had to be in town and he said this would be a great time to go down there, see where the water's coming in. So we did that. We did see some, some water coming in. It's not as bad as we thought it was with overflow from our roof and different things like that. But one thing that Travis said is Jim, I can have a structural engineer here, but there's so much stuff down here. He's, he's not, he needs to be able to see the corners and the, the wa- the walls and different things like that. And so. Um, I was kind of in a, in a bind and I contacted Rollin Larson to see if Larson Construction could maybe help us. He's in the middle of projects here, projects north of Walbe, all over. And I explained to him what I kinda needed in this. This is kinda due to our insurance and he just kinda said, well, when do you need this done? And I said, the sooner the better. And so they came last Wednesday, his crew, and, and cleaned out the boiler room. Now with that being said, I think it would be important for, valuable for us to just walk down there. Not to look at their work. You can commend Rollin if you see him, but I want you guys to see that room and see what we're dealing with because. This is an area that we are going to need to address. We may have to do some immediate. Corrections with the water on the floor and how to, and manage that. And, and I just wanna, I don't want us to have to spend too much money on this area, so I want it to be a, a focus again. So that we can, we can move on and hopefully bury that thing. I mean, obviously the, the boiler's gotta come out, but I'd like to bury that hole eventually. And we've been talking about that for a while, so.
We've been down there in the past, but we were just, you know, since it was such a hot topic, we just thought it would be a good idea to just go down.
Yep. Should we just go right now then?
Yeah.
And Mike Ninky helped coordinate the whole process of Larson Construction doing this, so he, he did a nice job. Uh, on a short note, so I appreciate what everybody did last week to get to the point that we're at, so if we could just walk down there quick.
Oh, um, old wooden pallets and scaffolding and tables and some old, uh, trophies. We did the trophies upstairs because I didn't wanna toss those. Unfortunately, they probably didn't store down here for quite a few years. I talked to Dan and John Nash and John He Walt and John said that stuff's been down there for fifty years. And so we had to move this all out. You can see that we did do some, uh. This, I don't recall happening in my time here, so I don't know when they put this little sump pump in.
There's still water.
Yep, they're still running and, and so we have to address that, uh. But the structural engineer will make a determination if the foundation is still good, if there's issues with that or could be issues, then he'll make recommendations.
What was this?
Um, we believe, I believe this area right here is actually the basement of the original elementary building, which had been like in the eighteen nineties.
Yeah.
And so, um, thi- this is old stuff. I mean, you're talking, I would say at least a hundred years old. The uh, the high school building was built in nineteen, the three story was built, started in nineteen nineteen and was finished in nineteen twenty one. Cause they, they built it over a few years ago. And that's gone. That building is, they're being torn down, so.
Well, it took down, when did they take down the old grade school?
The old grade school would come down with the middle school built in nineteen ninety.
Nineteen?
And this boiler room was part of that basement, I believe. I don't know that for sure, but I believe it was. And there is remnants of coal up on that, that ledge up there, which would have been part of that, that old foundation, so.
Yeah, it just trickles in. I showed you that when you, yeah, so.
So when we had the heavy, heavy rain, there was just kind of a glistening of water on the walls. It wasn't gushing in. So that part was good. However, I think we have a groundwater. Uh, there, there's some groundwater that probably. We have no idea where the water is. By the way, people who work on this actually crawl in here.
Wasn't that likely? Isn't that how you came in from the old grade school? Was that door up there?
Nope. There was a. Up on the stage and you could go up the stairs there.
No, not on the old grade school, even back.
There was a wing between the high school and the.
Was it? I remember falling down. I remember falling down. I get confused.
That could be that bricked off thing.
Wasn't there, you, could you get through it from those old lockers that were over there, like in the junior high wing in the day and then you'd come. Down through here that way?
That, that, the little attachment, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you used to go through there.
In between? Cause wasn't that just right up over, like over there and you'd come around and then drop down? And that would connect those, that little wing and the.
But I'm wondering if this wasn't here already.
Oh, heck.
And that was set, no, no, then it was over a little bit.
I don't, just don't think this was part of any of those structures. Cause the. My time, I remember the kitchen being in the basement down by the workroom in the high school. I'm done here.
Immediate where we've gotta throw in a ton of money into this. This infrastructure here, not a lot of it, cause that boiler could stay, this boiler could stay. Um, but all of the pipes and the pumps and everything that we're currently using, there's some cost to get that upstairs. Number one is location, where does it go? And number two, the cost of rerouting it all upstairs. The pipes go upstairs, so they're up there already, but, uh. Travis did make that comment at one time. He goes, yeah, there's a lot of infrastructure down here that would take some time and money to get up there. But that is our ultimate goal.
Anybody ever sees, so, great first meeting for you.
Yeah.
I mean, we can keep thinking about it, but eventually we're gonna have to start doing something.
Oh, you're gonna know when the structural engineer looks at.
Yep.
Yeah, then we won't have a choice. We'll have options, but I mean, it's.
Yeah.
The option's pretty clear.
The time's coming here. The clock's ticking and we're gonna have to start spending money down there again and we're gonna have to decide, are we gonna do that or are we gonna do something else? Well, and remember, what was the name of the other architectural firm we had that competed with AI and came and we specifically said? Well, IHG?
IS.
ISG, no. Remember, we specifically asked them, should we invest old money or invest money into the old building? And their one hundred percent recommendation was no. That was not a good investment. I mean, it's not been just us. We've known this. ISG was, what year was that they came? Two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty one?
It'd have been. It would have been nineteen.
Nineteen.
Because we started all of this process with a architect incorporated in twenty one. I mean, the, the formal plan started in twenty one.
They did that comprehensive study. I mean, they did a nice job and they told us that. So I mean, it's not like we've. It's a surprise. But just to be clear, I mean, if, if, if we're faced to make a decision here in a month or two to spend twenty, thirty, fifty thousand dollars down there. Are we gonna do that? Are we gonna put the wrestlers in the elementary gym and close this or what are we gonna do?
We're getting ahead of ourselves.
I don't think so, but I think the time's coming. Okay. Any other discussion on property and liability insurance? Capital outlay budget. Lori, turn that over to you.
Okay. I only have capital outlay on here because the other areas really haven't changed. This has not changed, but this always seems to be the hot topic. Um, and really nothing has changed much since I presented the preliminary budget in May. But I just wanted, you know, all of the projects that we have listed, the items that people have requested, we have all of those items listed. And I just need to be prepared to move forward. On all of those items, did anybody have any questions or concerns about anything that we have included? Leave it to Joel. Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
We have five hundred and ninety-two thousand of expense in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the playground project.
Yes.
And with that, and all the other expenditures we have in there, we're, we're gonna have a fund balance of one point two, three oh. But am I correct in saying that we only have two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in there for income from. Playground committee?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the last update I had.
Yep. But they've raised over four hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, but some of it, I don't know if they're.
You don't know when it's gonna come.
In this school year or, you know, Todd said some of it was pledged over five years.
Yep.
Yeah, it's pledges, not cash. Some's cash, some's pledges.
Correct.
But the email I got from him, I was, I will get two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in cash for sure.
Oh. I guess my point is.
Did he not say the first of the year?
Yeah, I think he did.
Yeah, it's in this school year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Well, I don't know about some of it. I know handsy money would be.
Yeah, he said.
That was the handsy money.
Before the first and after the first.
But it'll be in our fiscal year.
Yeah.
Our fiscal year.
No.
But the total would be there. Yep.
I guess I have a. When we're talking budget, whatever, and on this project. I know we went forward. Each year we try to do things, get it in the budget so we can start, hey, June one, let's get rolling. But most years we have to wait till we do our budget before we can approve something so we can start June first. I know we're doing this a little different. Does this create any problems? Approving something before it was budgeted.
Like what?
And then the amounts or whatever, unlike the playground or whatever.
Um, well, with the playground though, um.
I'm looking down the road, that's why I'm asking.
And all of that, the reason that I said it is because the board, we have literally had a motion that says, yes, we are moving forward with that project. None of that will be billed until the next school year.
Okay, so you're.
So that's the only reason that we're doing that.
Yeah, and then we put it in the budget here. That doesn't create any problems for you?
Uh-uh.
Okay, that's my question.
Yep. That's a good question. Okay, so, you know, we have the big projects in there that we've talked about. Um, two things I wanted to talk about in the budget is. House removal on the corner. That Weideman house that we purchased. So I have that in the budget.
I'd say you had ten thousand.
Yeah. I got that from an expert, that number. Um, can you, how do we move forward with that? Joel Shoemaker, if I need someone to tear that pro- that house down.
Just advertise.
Actually, I, I had somebody from the fire department say that they would propose that. And I said, you know, if that's something you guys can do. Um, I don't know if it's too close to the next adjacent house or, or what, but that discussion I think is going to be had. Perhaps even tonight if they have, do they have.
We've done that before, haven't we? As a school district, my thing, I'm gonna, stuff I've done with the city.
We've never burned it down ourselves, but the fire department has used practice stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and they've done that on other facilities or buildings.
They did it with the Gaber House, right?
Uh, no.
No, but they did a practice, they did a practice where they smoked it and everything, didn't they, on that, when we.
And so I did.
I think we did.
I did contact the city to see if they, they have that program of tearing down houses. Um, not that we wanna infringe on, you know, that to happen with, with uh, lots that perhaps aren't owned by the school. Um, but their, their program doesn't cover everything. What they would do is, we would contract somebody to tear down the house. The city would help or they would move it out into the, to the landfill, whatever. And so there's, there's a partial cost savings with that. And so, um. We, I like said, we would have to either advertise or contact somebody that's doing it. I'm not sure where, I'm not sure if there's anybody contracted with some other houses right now, but Mike Rosick said to just. Contact the city office to see if there's anybody that's, that's doing anything right now and we try to coordinate with them.
Do you wanna remove the garage at the same time or keep that?
So I do believe we have some stuff in there. I don't know what's in there, but I've looked at the garage and it's, I, I think it's structurally sound to keep. It might need some reinforcement and stuff, but you know, anytime that you have a little extra storage. Uh, and it's, it's suitable to keep and it's not a eyesore or falling in or dangers or liability, I'd say leave it, so. My, my initial, uh, survey of that, I would say keep the garage, but I might walk over there tomorrow and change my mind.
So if you have, you know, if you have recommendations, if you could just forward that to us so we can kinda start planning?
Talking about garages. If you were to build a garage to store the, uh, handicap accessible van, would that be able to come out of the special ed?
No.
Okay.
Listen, I have contacted here and I have tried so many things.
And I'm not second guessing you, but it just seems odd that that.
I know, but I've tried, you know, like I tried to expense part of our guidance counselors on a special ed, you know, like whatever percentage our. IEPs are and nope, can't do that and. So that was one project. And then another project is, I just wanted, we talked about this previously. This is back to our yellow bus that needs. So that was one project, and then another project is, I just wanted, we talked about this previously, this is back to our yellow bus that needs help. Um, Norrisite did do a second, you know, we got it over there and they did a second opinion on it. And they have the same recommendation that Cheyenne Transport did. And so, the engine needs to be replaced, so I'm just wondering, I, you know, we had some estimates about that previously. Is that something we can move forward with?
And we need, it's an O-nine. It, it didn't even have a hundred thousand miles on it, so, but that's the issue, so you can't count on the engine. Um, I have had some conversation with, with Kevin about other options. He has purchased a mid-bus, um, for himself. But it's, it's rated at a higher number of capacity, or a larger capacity that you would need a CDL for. So we're not interested in that as even being able to use it, so we have to either get more CDL people certified, or he would have to provide a driver plus. Then, then you're basically contracting more busing, and that's the reason we have the mid-buses, so that we can save some money by, you know, smaller trips. And we can manage the, the, we manage the trips and, and where they go and how much and all that. He did also, um, inform me about, um, I don't know if they're fourteen passenger or fifteen passenger vans, but there's these, uh. The, the Dodge, um, I don't know what they're called. But there, it's the new fifteen passenger vans, or fourteen passenger vans, um, schools cannot purchase those brand new. But apparently legally, we can purchase them used, and so that might be an option that we look at for replacement. However, they're not cheap.
And we also have to remember though, that our, the yellow buses are handicap accessible bus.
Yep, yeah.
And so that's pretty important.
And we've discussed that with Kevin, Kevin currently does have.
Can the handicap bus be, uh, fixed out of special ed funds?
No.
Just wanted to ask for a break.
I'm glad you're asking.
Good try.
We're trying to be creative, I get it.
Now Kevin does have a smaller route bus that has a lift, and, um. The only time that we would ever be in a pickle is if we had two different students. One that was on the route and one that was going on a trip somewhere, and his bus had to go somewhere, and so. The reason we purchased that yellow bus was we wanted a mid-bus, and we wanted one with a lift in it, because we had. We had a need for a lift at that time, and it wasn't anybody that was on a route, so Ron Block at Harlow's. Didn't have a bus with a lift, so we, we took care of our need ourselves. Um, the thing about that though is, I'll just throw it at you, we bought the yellow bus with the lift in O-nine. For like sixty-four thousand dollars. We bought the white bus in twenty-two, December of twenty-two, for fifty-two thousand. There's no lift, doesn't have all the, the school bus bells and whistles and everything else, and so you're talking about thirteen, fourteen years difference. And it's still cheaper without lift, so, they, they are expensive. But, we have a need. We have a need.
But we use it like to transport, like we have practice, you know, practice at the armory.
You had two repair costs, right? New, you had two repair costs, new and.
Well, new, but he doesn't recommend that.
And then he recommended it.
Kevin, you, Kevin recommended the used option.
What were the numbers, do you have them?
For the used?
Either.
Okay, well, for the new. He said new would be around thirteen thousand five hundred, that's without labor, but he does not recommend that, because then. This is the topic of the injectors, we, we'd still have to do the injectors, okay? Used, he can find somewhere around the sixty-five hundred dollar range, fifty-five hundred to sixty-five hundred, and labor would be around five thousand. So in that ten to twelve thousand dollar range.
I'm good with still on the used, but I'm not an expert on it.
That, what about the ejectors on the used though? Do they?
No, that would all be taken care of in that cost, everything would be fine.
Right.
I think, I think it's worth investing in the used.
Kevin recommends the used? Yes.
If we repair the bus.
I think we should. I think we have to keep the, the handicap accessible.
Absolutely.
I think used ones with a lift, you got a better chance than the lot.
And I can tell, just tell you guys, speaking from experience, I'd like to think we're pretty independent, our personal handicap van has been disabled for the last ten days. Needing repairs, and it's just, it's just miserable without it, so, once you have something, and when you need it, you need it. That's just one of them things, I think it's a school district, you gotta, I'd say move forward with the used.
I think we're all in agreement then, yeah. Thank you, Lori, thank you, Jim.
Okay, so with that being said, I think we have all the projects included in the capital outlay budget, the last thing I wanted to bring your attention to is, I did. Insert in your packet, um, the capital outlay limitation. That just shows, you know, this is what the state says we are allowed to request each year. And so for our school district, we are under the max allowable three percent plus growth. We can, our limit is set at one point nine million, one point nine eight million, and at this moment, we are requesting one point eight seven five. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because.
How long have we been at that one point eight seven five?
This is our second year, and the thing is with, with this, um, you know, when that grows, we're limited in what we can request. So we don't want that to grow too far out there, and then we can't make up if we have to.
What she's saying is, if you get too far from your limit, and, and where you actually are, you, you can't make that up in one year. There are limitations as to how much you can, you can increase, so you don't shock or, you know, shock the taxpayers with a. Hey, we need an extra million, you can't do that, you can only go up an incremental amount per year. And I don't know how they base that formula, but if, if you get three or four years behind, then you do need something. You can only ask still for the amount that you can increase.
Well, the first thing we gotta do is fix it here, and in my nine years I've been here, we've only ever had, to my knowledge, one state representative come to our meeting, and he just won. So maybe, we're gonna have representation out there, remember when Manhart came here?
Well.
Before he was eligible. Minor detail.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm just gonna throw out, I think we should go up the increment, keep it where we're at, and I think that, again, our special ed. Reserves, we should drop it the exact same amount, so again, it would be another year, zero percent increase to the taxpayer. We are, our special ed reserves are in, we have an unbelievable.
Healthy.
Numbers, yeah, healthy, that is a robustly healthy, uh, so I recommend that, uh, that's what we do. Make it so it's a zero percent increase, that way we don't get in a position like a lot of these other school districts we're seeing that are doing opt-outs.
And, I don't know if this is a good.
This won't alleviate getting into the position of an opt-out. It's just pu- it's just kicking the can.
I don't think we're in, but I don't think we even, are you gonna try to say that we're, I mean, Groton's doing it because they're not gonna supplement, they're choosing.
They're making a choice, yeah.
Choosing, now, there's other school districts up there, they're gonna be forced into it, I wanna be clear, I don't think we're anywhere close.
No, we're not.
If, unless we were to choose like Groton did, you know, said, hey, we're not gonna supplement the general fund, and hey, that's great for their district, that's great. Good for their district, but I do think it keeps us in a better position. In each legislative session, they do something that we're unknowing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we've been fiscally conservative for a long time.
We have been, well, not about.
And that's why I think we should make it even, another again, last year, it was zero percent. Right, Lori, I mean, the number that we asked for was the same amount we had asked for the year before. We do zero percent again, you know, it's, you know, we are effectively, it would be two years of zero percent, nobody's doing that. No city, no county. Couple of years, we retire quite a bit of debt too. Yeah.
But, I mean, we just looked at something that needs addressing, there's gonna continually.
Then we add it back in.
But it's, it's.
Yeah.
We have to continually update things, we can't just run it around.
Imagine if we hadn't done the CT wing. Imagine where we'd be at right now with them saying, well, yeah, you guys are gonna put another million into it, and now you just got a Band-Aid, and we still got a, um. An egg shop that's the su- I, I mean, was the egg shop even the size of this library? Maybe half of it? You know, now the egg shop we have, now the welding shop we have, I mean, Mrs. Holverstadt's kitchen. Versus the commercial kitchen that we have now. I think we did it right in the interest rates, I mean, again, we were smart. Well, we'll find out for sure, but that's where I'm at, I'm gonna recommend we do that, and you offset it with the special ed, so it's zero percent next year.
Can we talk about that further, because I have to present the budget to you in July? Just how, I mean, do you wanna wait on, do you want me to leave this as is, and just present this in July? And then you guys have the discussion and motion at that time, or?
We can review it in the meantime.
So just leave as is, present this, and then if there's a motion, we'll change it at that time?
I'm gonna say put it in, I mean, we're not making an action item tonight, we can do it either way. I think we can make it zero percent, plan for that right now, I mean, that's, that's where I'm at. I mean, I don't care where you guys are, you guys say it. Heck, we usually start with Larry, so Marty, where are you at?
I'd like to come in and visit with Lori a little bit, how to just try and make a little bit more informed decision. I don't know what you're gonna go with it, but I mean, very well might be exactly what you're saying, I don't know.
I thought I had my special ed budget there, no.
I have it.
We got it.
Do you need it?
Yeah, okay.
It's on the last month's.
I have mine, Mr. Smith.
Isn't, isn't our special bud, end of the year cash can be around two point one?
Two hundred and six.
Two point, two, two point two.
Two point two? I wish we had those reserves in general fund, for our capital outlays, we got two point two? I could give Lori kittens and say, she'll, she won't appreciate me saying this, but I'll say, I like you still, Lori. Put the capital outlay up to that one hundred and seven thousand, drop the special ed by two hundred thousand. We can still say we're giving a tax, we're giving a tax break, and we're still gonna be sitting good with the reserves. Might cause some consternation, I'll buy you a thing of Pepto Bismol or Tums, but.
Thank you, I love you neither.
You know? But it was only until last year, or that year before, it was, we've been building those special ed reserves, it was only five years ago, they were at one point six.
All we're looking for right now is just giving Lori some direction on how to present.
Guidance, yeah, we're not making a vote, no action item tonight.
Well, it seems it would make sense to me to do what Tom's saying.
Zero's a nice number.
Tax relief is also a nice, uh.
It is?
Thing, but the other thing we can't control are values, which I'm certain they're gonna continue to grow. I mean, we've had a two, a zero percent increase for two years, and we're still taking, I take flak, raise taxes. We didn't raise the call.
Yeah, yeah.
Your values went up.
But then, somebody's, somebody's went up, somebody else was doing less than, they gotta remember, if we, just use an easy number of a million. If our valuations go up by a hundred thousand, well, somebody's gonna be paying less if their val- you know what I mean? If somebody's goes up, someone else's go down, zero still, as Larry said, zero, zero. So for each person that talks to you about going up.